Most of you know the Texas Legislature created this committee, or commission, rather, to study and analyze the various methods in which our judges are selected in Texas. And as part of our efforts, we wanted to get as much input from the public as we reasonably can. And so that is the reason that we are conducting these public hearings. And as the people in the Corpus Christi area might be glad to know, you are the first public hearing we have held. So in a sense, you are guinea pig for our Zoom meeting. The COVID-19 pandemic has required many adjustments to our in-person meetings. Normally, our public hearings would be in-person meetings. But social distancing and group size restrictions really don't allow us to hold meetings in person. So we're currently streaming this meeting live to YouTube, just as we would if we were all meeting in person. And then on top of the COVID-19 pandemic, we had Hurricane Hannah and its aftermath. So we've all been challenged, and I really want to thank all of you who are going to participate today for taking your time to participate. It's very important to us. If you have any technical issues during this meeting, please either use the chat function to message Kelly Tibado or send an email to Megan Lavoy. Again, use the chat function to message Kelly Tibado or send an email to Megan Lavoy. Additionally, if for some reason you get disconnected or have to leave the meeting, you may rejoin the meeting and you'll be admitted promptly. And for those testifying, your video will be turned off and you will be muted until you are actually called on to testify. Now finally, we have certain time constraints. And so we have a large number of people who've signed up to testify before the public hearing. So as a result, everyone's testimony is going to be limited to five minutes per person, and that is going to be strictly enforced. So when you testify, please begin by saying your name and identify who you are representing, if in fact you are representing an organization. Thank you in advance and let us begin. And I think, tell me who our first witness is, Megan? Is that Mr. Badiantos?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Badiantos?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the committee, first let me thank you, Commission, let me thank you for being here. My name is Joseph Badiantos. I'm originally from Austin, Texas. Went to law school there at UT and was a prosecutor for about five years in Austin before I moved to Corpus Christi and learned to practice civil law. It's where I've been here for the last number of years. So let me first tell you, I appreciate each of you. I know some of you personally. Representative Hunter, for example, I think he's done a good job of assembling a local committee of cross-section of people, and I appreciate his efforts in doing that. I will tell you, I believe that the Commission takes its work seriously. I am going to tell you that as I read House Bill 3040, one of the things that concerned me, when I read through the charges to the Commission, was that it was to study the fairness, effectiveness, and desirability of the current method of selecting judges and to come up with a fair and partial recommendations to ensure fair and partial qualified and stable judiciary. And my concern is that some of that language in there could be read to be, to presume that the current state of Texas judiciary is in crisis, that it is somehow as a whole unfair, biased to prejudice, unqualified, and unstable. And by unstable, I'm assuming that to mean of a low number of years of experience or time in office. And so the first thing, and I've had the privilege of watching the previous Commission meetings, the videos, and I would be interested to know if the Commission has come up with any data, not opinions, but data to indicate that the judiciary's performance as a whole in the state has somehow been substandard or problematic, or that there is some great hue and cry from the public in Texas to change the way we select our judges. I will tell you that personally, I've been involved in either elective politics or the practice of law for a number of years. And while I know people may disagree with the result of certain elections, I don't think I've heard anyone say that they think the system by which we select our judges should be scrapped. And I would like to ask the Commission if they have any data that systems in other states, appointive systems or nonpartisan systems, yield judges that are better or judges that render better decisions or decisions that are reversed at a lower percentage? Because if we're talking about replacing the current system, I think that's what we should have. Barring that, I think the Committee is going, Commission is going to find that most Texans of either party or no party are going to be loath to give up their right to have direct participation in the selection of members of a coequal branch of government. It seems to me to boil down to a question of trust. And that is, is there trust in the people of Texas to select their judges? It would seem to me if those people were smart enough and informed enough to elect the representatives and senators and executive bodies of this government, they are also qualified to elect the judges. And I know the objective is to get the most qualified people on bench. I think there is a screening process for that. They're called primaries and general elections. The reason that I believe that is best is because it leaves those decisions in the hands of the general public of the state of Texas. I will tell you, I'm pretty well-known. I'm about as blue a Democrat as you will find. But I find it interesting that the people, for example Senator Birdwell, who actually publicized his opposition to, initially to the study. I actually agree with him, and that is, I trust the people of Texas to make these decisions. And I trust that we, as a whole, will correct erroneous decisions that we make in the next election. And so with regard to Senator Birdwell and the people who voted against along with him, while we may agree on little else, I agree with him on that proposition. I think the current judiciary in Texas is the best educated and the most diverse that we have had in our state's history. And while the system may not be perfect, I don't see good reason or good data to change it at this point. I thank the members for your time and wish you luck in your endeavor.
Yeah, Mr. Badiantos, let me just respond very briefly. We're currently in the process of trying to obtain a lot of data, including data along the lines that you're suggesting. So we're in the process of doing that. And I can assure you, at least from my perspective, I haven't seen anything from our members of the Commission where there's a presumption, one way or the other, on anything. At least as far as I've been able to ascertain, everybody's looking at this with an open mind, and we intend to follow the mandate that the Legislature has placed upon us. So with that, I just, I thank you very much for your comments. I've been making notes during the time you've been speaking, and I really appreciate you taking your time to participate. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Chairman, we have, we're missing a couple that are next on our list. So it looks like the next person that's present that's on our list is Jesse Gatewood.
All right.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Gatewood. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for letting me express my opinion. And so my name is Jesse Gatewood, and I represent the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 278 out of Corpus Christi, Texas. I'm also a proud member of that organization, private citizen. And I'm in support of leaving the process of electing our judges in the hands of the people. We want our voices heard. We want to, the best way for our voices to be heard is at the ballot box. You know, for us, it's not about red or blue. It's about our issues. We're, you know, we go down the ballot, we look at who the best candidate is, and then we select that based upon how they're going to help us in the workforce. There's been many a times that we look at, it, like I said, it doesn't matter what your political affiliation is, as long as you're going to help our membership increase their standard of living. That's what we're all about, is people helping people. So like I said, thank you for letting me be on and expressing my opinion about this election of our judges.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Gatewood. We appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, Ben Donnell.
Mr. Donnell?
I've learned that it always helps if I unmute myself. Although it's been argued that sometimes I'm better off muted. Anyway, I don't have a whole lot to add. It doesn't surprise me that there's not been a hue and cry from the rank and file people of the state to make some change in our judicial selection. I think it's the issue of whether or not judges should be elected or whether they should be appointed or whether has been a, has been an issue, perhaps issues that overstatement, has been a policy consideration since the beginning of this country. And I think I'm correct, that Texas may be the, one of the few states that has both totally elected and totally partisan elections at all levels. I may be wrong in that. But having said that, I'm like with Joseph and the previous speakers, I don't sense that there's any appetite among the bar or among the individuals that I've talked to necessarily to move away from an elected system. However, I think that there is perhaps some appetite for moving to a nonpartisan process. I think in the reading that I've done, that one of the concerns that the founders had about an elective process was that it exposed the judges too much to political pressures and to public opinion. And that's a part of the reason why the non-elected appointment was even considered. But having said that, I would encourage the Committee to look more at changing the, from a partisan to a nonpartisan process. I think that there may be, well, an appetite for that to happen. But that's, I compliment the Commission. It's, you're going to, it's a tough road a hole. It's been, this issue's been around longer than I've been in practice, which is a long time. So I congratulate you for your efforts and I'd be happy to assist in any way possible.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from any members of the Commission? If not, thank you, Ben. Appreciate you taking your time to give us your thoughts.
All right. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Chairman, I'm sorry, we're jumping around, is Becky Moller.
I'm sorry.
Becky Moller is next on our list.
Okay, Ms. Mueller?
Hello, and thank you for allowing us to speak today. Sorry, I had to think across my screen. I had to get rid of. My name is Becky Moller. I'm a resident of Corpus Christi, Texas. And both my state representative and my state senator are on the phone with us, I see, on the Zoom call. So hello, gentlemen. How are y'all? My testimony is that since I became eligible to vote by age a long time ago, I have missed only one election, and that was a city election. And I still remember being sad that I was out of town for that. So I really believe in voting. I have long known how important electing your local county, state, and national leadership is. Electing our judges is one of those most sacred elections to me. We live with appointed federal judges and Supreme Court judges who serve for life. By electing judges in Texas, we have the ability to either gather with our voters, our friends who think like we do, to either reelect those judges or turn them out. The ability to elect judges in Texas should give us the voice for balance on the judiciary that we require as a state to represent the citizens of Texas. After all, that's what it's all about, the citizens of our state. I have not had the opportunity, since I found out about the hearing, to actually go online and see what your exact charge is. However, I urge you to recommend continuing to elect judges by party. I think we still need to have partisan primaries and partisan elections. But let us continue to elect our judges in Texas. Make our votes count. That is sacred to me and many others in South Texas. Thank you for allowing me to be with you today.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Any questions by any members of the Commission? If not, Ms. Mueller, thank you very much for taking your time to appear before us.
Thank you.
Megan?
Next is Jenny Cross.
All right, Ms. Cross? We're having trouble hearing her.
Yeah, we're trying to get her to unmute.
Oh, okay. Yeah, don't sign up online.
Unmeeting her audio. Let's go to the next person. We'll come back to her. Daniel Garza.
Okay, Mr. Garza?
Okay, he has hopped off, so let's skip him as well and go to David Bright.
All right, Mr. Bright?
I'm here. Mr. Chairman and Committee members, thank you for having this. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm a former president of the Corpus Christi Bar Association. I'm a member of ABODA, the American Board of Trial Advocates. I've been trying cases across the state of Texas for in excess of 30 years now. I am opposed to changing the current system of selecting judges. And let me just briefly give you three points I think are worth considering. One, I think if we're going to talk about changing a system and if we're going to try to come up with an alternative, there has to be a pretty strong consensus that we've got a real problem. I'll tell you something that I do not, have not experienced, and that is, I very, very rarely walk out of a courtroom, win or lose, and question the competence of the judges. I really think we have a highly qualified judiciary in Texas. Earlier, Mr. Chairman, I think you mentioned something to the effect of, we're not presuming that they are unqualified or qualified. I am telling you that I believe that we have an extremely qualified judiciary. There is, my experience, and my experience in all immodesty is pretty vast. I think we have an extremely qualified state court judiciary in Texas. I have not heard otherwise, and I've not seen, you know, as Mr. Donald said, I've not seen some hue and cry from the bar that we need to do something about this crisis of unqualified judges. If there is not a problem, I do not think that we should change the current system. The second thing is, as Ms. Mueller mentioned, taking away the voices of selecting, of citizens and selecting judges is a very serious thing. I would put a very high burden against doing that, against taking away the voices of citizens. The only reason I can think of doing that is because there is some thought that citizens are not up to the task of selecting judges. I strongly disagree with that. The third thing has to do with nonpartisan elections, and it's an interesting question, and I know that that comes up from time to time. I think the significant thing there is this, you really have to dig down into the details of how that is done. I'm not sure how that's done, but if it is like a wide-open, at-large city council election in which you don't have the two-party sort of filtration system of primaries, I think what that is, is a much more expensive system. Because I think that a person, well, I'm sure that a person running for judge in a race of five or six people is going to have to raise and spend a considerable amount of money. I think more than what we see. I think that a race like that also sort of, I mean, that's how Arnold Schwarzenegger was elected governor in California. He was running in a wide-open field with a lot of people, and he had name recognition. And unfortunately, his name recognition was that of an actor. I think that if your name is Willie Nelson, you probably have a better chance of getting elected in a wide-open, nonpartisan election. And I think the fact that it's more expensive, and I don't know if it results in maybe electing someone on some plurality where they have 12% of the vote or something. I just don't see that as being an improvement on the current system. So for those reasons, I am opposed to changing the current system based on over 30 years of practicing law.
Mr. Bright, let me get your thoughts on something. And again, I practice in Houston. And, you know, we frequently have 50, 60, maybe even more than that, judges on the docket, on the ballot, rather. How do we inform the people as to how they should vote? Or as to the qualifications of the various candidates? Because the problem, at least that I've perceived to some extent, is people vote, but the question is, are their votes informed? And I'm talking about in a big area where you've got that many people on the docket. I'd appreciate your thoughts.
I got three thoughts about that. One is a very practical one in terms of qualified judges. I have now, in the last year, including in this, in these weird COVID times, I have been involved in two cases in Houston with judges. One is the probate judge where I'm trying a case, and another is the district judge who unseated Republican opponents in what I'm assuming was sort of a Democratic way. Both of them are highly qualified. Their predecessors were qualified as well. I really can't say they are less or more qualified. They absolutely, I don't have a complaint about any of them. They all seem to be well-informed, and they all seem to be well-prepared. So from a practical standpoint, I have, if the complaint is that there's people going and voting in a partisan way, and they're turning out what we think to be good judges, I've not seen myself a situation where I've gone into the courthouse and said, wow, this place has really taken a turn for the worse. Number two, that's what democracy is. That's just a problem of democracy that we have, and that is not limited to judges. That's, I mean, I kind of enjoy going to the ballot and seeing a long list of people, you know, candidates to choose from, because that's what democracy is. One of the problems of democracy, obviously, is to the extent the citizenry can inform itself, you know, it functions better. I can't see that an alternative improves that. And for a good example might be, I, not only have I not heard a hue and cry about unqualified state court judges, you know, in the last year, we have, actually, there has been a lot of public discussion about lack of qualifications of people who have been appointed to the federal bench. And that's been a, and I think rightly so, a significant issue. So someone is going to select these people. I think one of the situations is if we don't like, you know, if we think that as voters, we've made a mistake, we can correct that, which is another good thing about democracy.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Any other questions by members of the Commission? If not, Mr. Bright, thank you very much for taking your time to give us your views and thoughts.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, next is Coretta Graham.
Hello?
All right, Ms. Graham?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Coretta Graham. Briefly to give you some background, I am African-American, female, business owner, small business owner. I've been, I own business for over 20 years. I practice primarily criminal law and also family law, some probate. So I'm in front of criminal law, you know, judges that deal with criminal cases and judges that deal with civil cases. And I think our current system, you know, given the ups and downs of our political landscape, is the best system we have that we need to work on perfecting as much as we can. I don't think switching to an appointment system is going to necessarily solve our problems that might be by getting money out of politics, getting partisanship out of, you know, judiciary. And what I see from my perspective as African-American is the issue of implicit bias, which can only come through proper training of judges. I think, as stated before by my colleague, Mr. Bright, you run the risk of appointing unqualified people if you just go strictly to an appointment system. It's why we're having such an issue or why the federal judiciary, because I also practice in federal court as well as in state court. Why you often see an issue with the federal judges now, because you have a lot of people being appointed to lifetime positions who are clearly not qualified to be on a federal bench in a lifetime position with the level of cases that they have to review and a level of scrutiny that's required on the federal level. So my testimony is that we should work on trying to better the current system. If we're for democracy, we should allow the citizens to have their opinion, to vote on who they think is best for their community, not have appointments come through the governor's office or any other appointed body where the citizens don't have an input. And citizens now, through the voting, can have an input who they want on their bench, particularly in my line of work, which is criminal cases. We need to have people who are on the bench who have the temperament and the background. And voters, I think, with education can be, can become knowledgeable on who would be the best candidate.
Any questions by members of the Commission? If not, thank you very much, Ms. Graham. I appreciate you taking your time. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'll go first.
All right.
I'll go first, if you don't mind, Senator. I was just going to ask, Ms. Graham, you're talking about perfecting and training. And what's a thing that you're in favor of? Would you favor training of potential candidates for a judge and allow them to use that as a credential to the voters or to the nominating commission or whoever it is? You've mentioned implicit bias training. Is there any other training that you would like to see your judges have before you interact with them?
Basically, a lot of times, people, from what I see, they may run for judge, but I understand the gravitas or gravity of the office. So some kind of pre-candidate, this is, if you want to run for this position, this is what you need to assess before you make that important decision. So you're not wasting your time and you're not wasting the public's time. But I don't know if you can make that mandatory or not. But I think a lot of times it's on-the-job training, as long as you have the type of lawyer. Because that's, you know, when we're talking about district judge level and county judge level, they have to be lawyers to begin with. So they're already getting training. But at JP level, they don't necessarily have to be lawyers. But if we're talking about the district level, I don't know if you can make that mandatory, but I do know that sometimes people jump in because they see an opportunity, but they don't necessarily know what they're jumping into. I don't know how that can be remedied mandatorily, but.
All right, thank you.
Senator Hinojosa, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, I guess a good point that was made by Mrs. Graham was that federal judiciary has, to a certain extent, been politicized by the present administration. But Ms. Graham, would you favor any type of process where we would have nonpartisan appointments with the approval of voters?
I think right now, we have that kind of process. If a judge decides to retire from the bench, the bench and not fulfill their term of office, I think there's an appointment process that could be tweaked that we currently have in place. I don't think we need to create a whole new process. I think we don't want to cut out the voters, and we want to make sure that at least they have an opportunity to have a say-so and who they want hearing their cases and their community. And if a judge decides to retire early, which we've seen here in Oasis County, then you have an appointment process, and we maybe need to look at that.
Well, one more quick point. I guess what I was trying to articulate very well, and it is to have a independent commission, or committee, sort of vet the judges' qualifications and pick the top three judges, and then offer those three judges, and only those three to the governor to appoint, then have the voters participate either A or N.
No, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Corey.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the commission? If not, thank you, Ms. Graham. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
And Chairman, next we have Chris Davis Garcia.
All right.
Unmute her.
Megan, I'm here, I think.
Okay.
We can hear you.
All right, very good. We can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Beck and honorable members of the Texas Commission on Judicial Selection, thank you for the opportunity to address this esteemed body this morning. I am Chris Davis Garcia, longtime resident of Corpus Christi and a member of the League of Women Voters of Corpus Christi. I'm speaking this morning on behalf of our Board of Directors, and I'm reading prepared testimony. For more than 50 years, after extensive study and restudy of the issue before us today, the League of Women Voters of Texas has supported either the appointment-retention method and/or the nonpartisan election of the Texas judiciary. The League's position statement reads, "The League supports an effective, independent, qualified, and inclusive judiciary for Texas, which includes a uniform fiscal policy as part of a single system of centrally-administered statewide courts, an assignment of judges according to special training and docket needs." The League supports the selection of judges in the following manner: nomination by a diverse, representative, nonpartisan commission with appointment for a specific term, or appointment by the governor for a specific term. Judges are subject to retention or rejection in an unlimited number of periodic nonpartisan elections, and that this should apply to Texas Supreme Court, Court of Criminal Appeals, and the Courts of Appeal. Selection of state district court judges could be by nonpartisan election or by appointment-retention. And judicial campaigns should be funded with public money. This commission is tasked, as we understand it, with considering the fairness, effectiveness, and desirability of selecting through partisan elections the following officials: statutory county court judges, probate, district justices of the Courts of Appeal, Texas Court of Criminal Appeals, and the justices of the Supreme Court. The League realizes that your study will consider judicial selection methods proposed or adopted by other states or considered among yourselves, as well as the merits of using a public member board to nominate or assess the qualifications of candidates for the specified judicial offices. We understand, too, that an alternative method of selecting judicial officers must also be assessed, including lifetime appointment, appointment for a specific term, appointment for a term followed by a partisan election, appointment for a term followed by a nonpartisan election, and more. We understand that Texas is one of just six states that elect all of their judges on a partisan ballot. It's a system rife, the League believes, with potential conflicts of interest. As lawyers write campaign contribution checks to judges they may appear in front of weeks later, and voters select among partisan candidates who promise to serve impartially once seated on the bench. We know the system has also triggered perennial sweeps when an entire party slate wins election with little differentiation among candidates with varying experience levels and qualifications. Good government advocates, attorneys, and many judges, we believe, have long agitated for a new way, but the issue has proved intractable, in part because voters are loath to give up their voice in the process, even though few know anything about the candidates from whom they are selecting, and in part because the party in power has little incentive to alter a system that's working to its advantage. The League realizes that a major revamp of the judicial selection system would require a constitutional amendment, meeting a bipartisan two-thirds majority in each chamber, and of course, the approval of Texas voters. There's no doubt this commission has a difficult task ahead, but the League of Women Voters of Corpus Christi believes Texas deserves the opportunity to move forward away from big-money partisan judicial elections and toward a fairer system for selecting the most qualified, fair, and impartial judges. Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission, for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Any questions by other members of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if that's all right?
Absolutely.
Good morning, Ms. Garcia. Thank you very much for coming and talking with us. You mentioned public financing of campaigns. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? And related to that, there's a question, you mentioned big money, and if you could elaborate on that, what your thoughts are about big money, which is currently injected into our system from private sources, contributors to the judicial campaign? If you could talk on those two topics, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Babcock, I'm sorry that I'm not prepared to answer those questions, and I'm using a prepared statement from the board. And much of our material, of course, is from our state league. Thank you for asking me that question, and I'm sorry that I can't provide additional information at this time.
That's quite all right. Story of my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock.
Ms. Garcia, is there any possibility that you could get the answers to those questions and submit answers in writing to us?
I'll be glad to do so, Chairman. We have a state program issue director on the state board, and I will pursue that this afternoon. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I appreciate you taking your time to read the prepared statement.
Our pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next up, Chief Justice Dory Contreras.
Justice Contreras?
Okay, here I am. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. How are you this morning?
I'm doing very well, thank you. Staying safe here in Corpus despite this pandemic and hurricane and ransomware attack that we've just recently recovered from. So we've had a triple whammy here.
Oh, wow.
So I am Chief Justice Dory Contreras. I'm in my 18th year of service on the 13th Court of Appeals, my second year as chief justice. In total, I have been through 12 elections, counting primaries and generals, with nine of them being contested. Believe me, I'll be the first person to tell you that elections can be very rough. Campaign finance issues is something that needs to be addressed, but that's another topic. Notwithstanding the challenges associated with the election process, I am here to speak in favor of the election of judges. In a state as large and diverse as Texas, the judiciary should be representative of the population of its district. This can only be accomplished if the people decide. I, for one, would not be in the position I'm in because I am a Democrat, and Texas has been Republican-controlled the entire time I have served. A quick review of Texas history informs us that all judges were initially appointed by the governor with Senate consent. In 1866, the system was changed to election by popular vote. Three years later, changes were made so that the Supreme Court and district court judges were once again appointed. In 1876, the election system was reinstated for those judges, as well as the Court of Civil Appeals, which was created that year. Finally, 15 years later, the Court of Criminal Appeals was created, and it was decided that judges would be elected on a partisan basis. My point is that the appointment system has been tried a few times, and it didn't work. The principal agent problem helps us understand why it didn't work. Judicial appointments gave governors and legislators, the agents, control over the courts instead of giving that power to the people, the principals. Many critics argued that appointments made the judges agents of the agents, not agents of the people. I encourage you to read The People's Courts Pursuing Judicial Independence in America by Jed Handelsman Sugarman. In essence, Texas decided that the imperfections of the system of election of judges was preferable to the system of appointing judges. In Texas, the independence of the judiciary relies on elections. In my time as a judge, I have met numerous judges from other states where the appointment-retention system is utilized. It has its own problems as well. First, what works in other states isn't necessarily best for us. Maybe in Vermont, the governor can credibly speak for the whole state and can appoint all its judges, but not so here, given our size. Some of the problems are that selection committees will be comprised of favorites of the governor, who will only recommend candidates which the governor favors, and typically along party lines. So the issue, the question that was raised by Senator Hinojosa, that would have that same, those same concerns. Good judges in those states have been taken out of office by special, special interest groups that will fund a campaign against them because an issue has been decided unfavorably to them. It is impossible for an individual to fight well-funded companies and interest groups. Typically, in these states, judges seeking retention are not permitted to raise the money needed to find, fund a fight of this nature. The concerns being raised now are because of the Democratic sweep that occurred in 2018. To that, I have to say that there were no concerns raised when the Republicans swept the elections years ago and have maintained a stronghold in the higher courts for 20-plus years. So the concerns, to me, seem a bit disingenuous at best. The concern that judges are elected along party lines can be remedied without sacrificing the election of judges. First, one thing that has not been discussed here so far is the elimination of straight-ticket voting. That should take care of part of the perceived problem in that voters are going to have to inform themselves on the candidates and vote accordingly. The impact of this method remains to be unseen. Perhaps any change to election of judges at this time is premature because no one can predict what that impact is going to be. Second, as has been discussed, the nonpartisan elections could possibly be the answer. However, the risk of ballot roll-off or undervoting would have to be addressed to assure that judges aren't overlooked on the ballot. And there are many others, other issues to be addressed and to be considered. In short, as well-intentioned as this committee may be, it is impossible to keep the politics out of any system. So it is best to leave it to the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Justice. Any questions by members of the commission?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Senator?
You would.
I thought I'd tell the chairman and the commission that Chief Justice Contreras was the first woman to get elected as chief justice to 13th Court of Appeals.
It was a hard fight.
And this is coming from a part of the state, South Texas, that's considered macho country. So that shows you the respect that the voters have for Chief Justice Contreras. But a quick point. I think a point as well made is that we still don't know the consequences of the changes we made in the election process of eliminating street-party ticket voting, what impact it will have on the judiciary. For that is yet to be seen and an unknown factor. And quite frankly, the other day, it may prove very beneficial in trying to eliminate the swing text bases that took place whenever the Republican Party takes all the seats or Democrats take all the seats. This, eliminating the street-party ticket voting may be a way to stabilize that factor, but it's yet to be seen. But anyway, thank you, Chief Justice.
Any other questions by members of the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if I may.
All right, absolutely.
Thank you. And thank you, Justice Contreras, for appearing before us. You mentioned the Democratic sweep, which was in Harris County, where Chairman Beck and I primarily practiced. It was overwhelming. And it was too in Dallas County and in Austin and San Antonio. And so I wonder if we change this system to an appointed system, not saying that that would be our recommendation, but if it were, how would you accommodate the fact, if at all, that the voters have sort of overwhelmingly elected a whole new batch of jurists? And frankly, I don't think we can be blind to the fact that many of these judges that have been elected are people of color and diverse, and there's diversity now that didn't exist before. So in a transition from an elected to an appointed system, is there any way to acknowledge this rather dramatic expression of will by the voters in our major metropolitan areas?
In terms of the retention of those judges, is that what you're asking?
Well, that would be one way to do it, to provide some sort of transitional protection for those judges. Is there any, do you have any ideas in that, in that regard?
No, I do know that, having visited with judges, because I'm very involved in organizations nationally, so I've met many of the judges from around the country, and they have, it's all done so differently, excuse me. In fact, in one, in a couple of states, in many of the states, actually, the chief justice is not elected, even though they elect in those particular states, the chief justice is not elected. The chief justice is chosen by the judges on the court, which I think makes a lot of sense, having been through a terribly contested election for chief justice here. But no, the concern always comes, comes in with the committee, with the, how the committee is formed, and how you can assure that that committee is really going to be fair and nonpartisan, because many of them do turn out to be partisan. And the appointments are along partisan lines, just like the presidential appointments are. They're always, you know, if it's a Republican president, they're Republicans appointed. If it's a president, you know, Democrat president. And there's just so much unfairness with that whole process as well. My, one of my colleagues, and I don't want to trump her because she may be, she's speaking today, but she was nominated for a position on the Fifth Circuit and was approved at every step of the way by every group that is out there conceivably, and then blocked at the very end because of our Republican senators, simply on that basis. I mean, she was very, she's very qualified and deserved the nomination and the appointment, and she didn't get it because of, because she's a Democrat. So that is my concern with the whole appointment process to begin with. And then the retention system has its, its problems too, because it depends on how it works in terms of ability to, you know, raise money to be able to fight some organizations that may come after you. Personally, I do think there needs to be changes to the finance problems, because the fundraising is, is difficult. And when you go up against well-funded people, it's tough. And it does put us in, into what can be perceived as, as conflict of interest, I think is the term that was used earlier. And, you know, I have had people that have supported me in a campaign that I've ruled against, and then, you know, they're not happy with me. But, you know, that's the nature of it. But it does make it difficult, and that's something that should be addressed and may address some of the concerns that people have about the independence of the judiciary.
Yeah, the money part is something that members of the commission will know that I'm very concerned about. Not, not because I think frankly, any judges are influenced in how they rule, just as you mentioned, you've ruled against your contributors before, but the public perception, and I think particularly for disadvantaged people and people of lower economic circumstances, that hurts their perception of whether or not there is justice or whether it just goes to the money people. That's something that I'm very concerned about. But thank you so much for your comment.
Sorry, I can't answer your question better as far as the protections, because it just depends on how it's set up, and it's, there's so many different methods.
No question about it. Thank you. Yeah, no question about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Chief Justice, I'm always, I'm sorry, Judge, Chief, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Chief Justice Contreras, hi, Wallace Jefferson here. How are you?
Great, thanks.
You are, uh, highly qualified for the position that you hold.
Thank you.
You've had probably hundreds of jury trials and, uh, regularly in appellate courts before, uh, you became a justice and then chief justice on the court. But under our current system, um, uh, one concern is that those qualifications really don't necessarily matter in an election, especially in major metropolitan areas and counties where there are 80 judges on the ballot. And so rather than merit, uh, they assume the bench because maybe they, they have raised more money than anyone else or, or they have the right name, surname, uh, that's appealing to the voters, or they become part of a partisan sweep. And, uh, do you have, how would you, under our current system, address those issues where somebody that has never tried a case and never argued an appeal and maybe has a record that is unfortunate for service as a judge, has the possibility of becoming not only district judge or Court of Appeals justice, but a chief justice of an intermediate court or the Supreme Court of Texas?
And, and I will agree with you, uh, Chief Justice Jefferson, that, that is a concern, that the voters are not as informed as they should be when it comes to electing the judges. And this election is already, you know, proving to be an example of what needs to be done. Unfortunately, this pandemic is, is hindering the efforts of the candidates out there, but because of the elimination of straight-ticket voting and because candidates are going to have to make sure that their box gets, next to their name, gets checked, they have to inform the voters. And there are so many methods of doing that now through, of course, the, the standard ways of doing so with the mailers and the television and the signs and et cetera. But, uh, social media has just become a huge part of that. And it's just incumbent on the candidates, if they want the position, they need to sell themselves to the voters and convince the voters that they are the most qualified person, uh, and to get their credentials out there. And there's organizations that can help in that regard too. For instance, you know, the, the Republican parties and the Democrat party, people can help push their candidates, that sort of thing, by informing the voters. So it's just, it's just a matter of education, more education, so that the people do make informed decisions. And, and I am a strong believer in that.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Justice. I'm always concerned about telling a judge, particularly a chief justice, that her time is up.
Well, but Chief Justice Tom Phillips raised his hand. Do you want to cut him off?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see, Chief Justice Phillips.
Oh, I thought he was talking to me all along. Uh, Chief, you raise some interesting points, uh, and I have two questions. One, uh, would you favor considering a constitutional amendment to, uh, enhance the qualifications to serve as a judge? Whether that's by years you've been licensed or by actual practical experience or by accomplishments, professional accomplishments?
Yes. I think that would be helpful.
Think of some of those things, that, that, that and campaign finance are both within our remit, I think. And then finally, uh, given the issues of partisan sweeps, and, and I think there were some people concerned and complaining even when Republicans were winning every race.
That is loud, I don't think.
Given those sweeps, uh, what do you think about mandatory cross-filing? That is, that every candidate has to run in any party that holds a primary?
Wow, I've never even heard of that.
Oh, Texas had it in 1952, so. But, but New York and California have had much longer experience with it.
I, uh, you know, I mean, technically, we do that in the general because we're before, you know, both parties in a sense. I, I don't know, I'd really have to give that some thought and have a better understanding of how it works before I can state whether I would be in agreement with that or not.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Chief Justice, you should know that Chief Justice Phillips is the commission's historian.
Oh, gosh, so did I get anything wrong about that book? I haven't read it in its entirety.
Close enough.
Yeah, thank you so much for your appearance, Chief Justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very helpful comments.
And, uh, next is Daniel Garza.
Hello.
Mr. Garza.
Good morning, everybody. Um, I apologize for not being on here earlier. I was having some technical difficulties. So to introduce myself, my name is Daniel Garza. I just graduated from Flower Bluff High School. So I'm going to be going to college in the fall as a freshman at Texas A&amp;M University. And I heard about this because I'm an intern for Representative Hunter. And, uh, he told us about this opportunity and I just wanted to voice my opinion, which is something that Senator Hinojosa and Chief Justice Contreras have, um, illustrated also, which is no matter what, you will always have a, some sort of politics behind, um, appointments. So even if you do, in my opinion, even if you have an independent entity that appoints people to, um, court, they'll still end up being political in some way, shape or the other. So my opinion is that if you're going to have politics involved in that, you might as well just leave it up to the people. And something that I've heard a lot of, um, members talk about today is the issue of uninformed electorate, electorate, I apologize, and which is true. I'm just graduated high school, so I can speak firsthand on the amount of uninformed electors or voters that are out there. And the unfortunate thing about that is I would say, no matter what, you still have to follow the will of the people. And if the people vote for somebody, even if it's, might not be the best decision, that's still who the people vote for, in my opinion. And as, um, elected officials and just as a democracy, our job is to, and your job is to really just listen to what the people want. So that's, um, basically all that I had. I just wanted to reiterate what Senator Hinojosa and Chief Justice Contreras said, which is that no matter what, you're always going to have politics involved in that. And another thing I've heard a lot is the system's not broke. And I have an old saying, if the system's not broke, don't fix it, don't mess with it. And I think that that might apply in this case. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions by members of the commission? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Garza, for taking your time to appear before us and share your views.
Thank you.
And next is Justice Gina Benavides.
Judge Benavides?
Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can. Thank you very much.
I was having some internet issues earlier and I'm hoping that it stays strong, as I sit in my dining room in McAllen, Texas, dealing with the damage to my home from Hurricane Hannah.
Oh, no.
Yes. Well, good morning, judges, senators, representatives, and other members of the Texas Commission on Judicial Selection. Some of you know me, some of you know me very well. But those, for those who do not know me, my name is Justice Gina Benavides. I am currently the senior justice on the 13th Court of Appeals, sitting in Corpus Christi in Edinburgh, having served that court for 14 years. While sitting as a justice, I have held numerous leadership positions. I am currently the chair of the Judicial Section of the State Bar of Texas. I have served on the board to the Texas Legal Services Corporation. I currently chair the Appellate Diversity Section of the Appellate Section. I have served on various Texas Pater and Juror Committees for the State Bar. I'm also the former chair of the Texas Center for the, of the Judiciary. I was on the board of the Texas Access for Justice Commission. I was on the Solution Tax Force of 2012. And I formerly chaired the Hispanic Issue Section of the State Bar. That's just to name a few. As a lawyer, I also served various organizations as leader, including being the minority director for the State Bar of Texas. I was your regional vice president for the Texas Association of Defense Counsel. I was president of the Mexican-American Bar Association for the State of Texas and president of my local bar association, also just to name a few. I am also a constant speaker and have written various articles, most recently being published in the St. Mary's Law Review on Appellate Ethics. But I come before this committee not with any of those hats, but because I've worn all of those hats. And all of those hats have given me a special understanding of the issues that is before this commission. And as a matter of fact, I recall in the 1990s, sitting on a State Bar Committee, sitting at the Texas Law Center in Austin, serving on a committee from the State Bar, addressing this same issue over 30 years ago. I've also campaigned five times. I've campaigned locally for school board, regionally for the Court of Appeals, and statewide for the Texas Supreme Court. I've won three and lost two, and every race is political. As mentioned earlier by my chief, I was also considered by the Obama administration for the Fifth Circuit. During that vetting process by the FBI, Justice Department, and ABA, I signed over 13 consent forms. I endured interviews of all my neighbors, friends, non-friends, my doctors, my bankers, and many, many more people, ultimately receiving the green light in interviewing with the Corning Cruz Committee. Of course, I did not receive the nomination. But rest assured, it wasn't due to lack of qualifications. It was a political reason. The selection process is also political. I stand before this commission in support of judicial elections and that the people of the State of Texas have the right to vote for their judges. We should be held accountable, not by some few in some room making a decision, but by the, by the very people who are, we are directly affected by our decisions. When the independence of our judiciary is being attacked today, the selection of our judiciary is even more important. Decisions should not be made by those who do not answer to the people. I'd like to talk about an issue that's been slightly mentioned today, and that is diversity. I need not to remind this commission that Chief Justice Wallace Jefferson, in your first meeting in December of 2019, admitted that the most recent elections of the judiciary elected many first minorities to the judicial, including Chairman Beck, 18 African-American women to the Houston courts, and has created the most diverse judiciary we have ever had in the State of Texas, including my own chief, who chose not only the first female, but the first female Hispanic on the 13th, to hold a chief position at the 13th. It is undisputed that elections create a more diverse judiciary. Professor Sharon Nevada from the University of Texas has published numerous books and published, uh, publications that show that this is statistically correct. However, we need to look no further than our own Fifth Circuit, where the last three Hispanic judges from the State of Texas who retired or took senior status, Benavides, Garzandeanda, have not been replaced by Hispanic, which means that currently on the Fifth Circuit, there are no active Hispanic judges on the court, even though Hispanics represent nearly one-third of the Fifth Circuit's general population. And by the way, there's never been a female Hispanic on the Fifth Circuit. But we should also address perception. Justice Hilda Tagley, the senior judge of the U.S. District Court of the Southern District, and by the way, the first female Hispanic appointed to the district court in 1998, she was also the first Hispanic voted to a county court of law in Oasis County, once told me that facts are malleable, but perception is rock solid. And here is the perception, commissioners. For the first time, minorities are gaining recognition and positions of authority in the judiciary, and suddenly now that must be stopped. That elections no longer work and we can no longer trust the voters. I've heard this many times and from many different people. Most recently, this past Monday, at the State Bar of Texas, Special Call Meeting on Diversity on July 27th, that same comment was made, that somehow now we have to elect our judges because diverse, we've become a more diverse judiciary. I'd like to address, uh, the, another issue, many other issues that we talked before today, whether it's qualifications, partisan and fundraising. But you gave me only five times, so unfortunately I can't address them. I also wanted to address the historical aspect, but thankfully, Chief Justice Contreras did that already. And I strongly recommend y'all to read that People's Court book. It was quite, I had a long conversation with Judge Vareal, who is a district judge in Laredo. So commissioners, I believe that you should affirm our constitution and let the people decide their judges. Thank you, and I stand ready to address any questions the commissions may have. That's the end of my prepared speak, Chairman David. I do want to address a question that Judge Martha Jamison asked earlier of Coretta Gamm on implicit bias, if I may.
Absolutely.
As chair of the Judicial, uh, as a former chair of the center, the judiciary also served on their continued education. For those who do not, the Texas Center provides all the judicial education for the State of Texas. It has always and will always have in its program implicit bias programming. So it is held, uh, throughout their CLE, we constantly try to include it, include it in our judicial education. It is however, not mandatory at this time, such as the hours of judicial we must have and/or like the violence. So that's something that we should maybe address, of making it mandatory for judges. I know at the State Bar meeting on Monday, that is discussed, the Board of Directors now have to undergo implicit bias training be, uh, once they're on the Board of Directors.
And any questions by members of the, uh, commission?
Just a, I do want to comment, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I, I know Justice Benavides, um, God, so many years, I had hair. I don't have hair. I don't have any.
I remember, Senator.
But let, let me say this, uh, I think she made an excellent point about why just a raw appointment of judges would not work, in a sense, because you do not eliminate politics. When she went through a process for an appointment to the Fifth Circuit, obviously she cleared all the hurdles, uh, but yet she was blocked at the end of the day for political reasons, uh, not because of qualifications. So as we move forward, probably consider, uh, if any recommendations could be made, uh, that's, that's, that's a point that we need to remember in any decisions or recommendations we make for the legislative coming next session. And I'm sure it'll be debated, uh, during the session also. It is, uh, if our recommendations become, um, are formed into any type of legislation. But again, thank you, Judge, uh, Justice Benavides, for your excellent testimony.
Yeah, qualifications is very interesting. Someone made the comment earlier, and I, I, I think actually it was on the qualifications regarding, you know, having more jury trials, having more appellate arguments. When I ran against, uh, just Judge, uh, Jeff Boyd, uh, for Texas Supreme Court, um, that was the issue. I had served on the appellate court for quite some numbers of years. And at that point, I think I've written over 600 opinions. Jeff Boyd was qualified in that he was a lawyer. He had served as a lawyer, was a litigator, but had no appellate experience. Uh, and lost that election. And I think that Jeff Boyd has been an excellent judge at the Texas Supreme Court. Not always agreeing, but he has become the voice of dissent on the Texas Supreme Court. So I think that that's very important. Also, don't, there's an assumption being made, I think, today that money also seems to be a, a catch-all, um, that somehow if you have more money, you win. We've discussed, Chief Contreras' very contested primary and general election. She was outraised and outspent in both of her elections, and she won both her primary and her general election, even though she was underfunded and spent less money than her opponents. I, I think, I, I know that to be completely correct in her primary and pretty close to her, uh, general election as well. So money doesn't always mean you're going to win. So I think that's also an important, uh, when we're trying to make these assumptions, we need to be careful that these assumptions are not correct.
Thanks very much, Judge. Any other questions?
Uh, Judge Jamison and I'll take out their hand trays.
Judge Jamison?
Okay, uh, hello, Justice, good to see you. And as soon as you're at the Texas Center, it reminded me to ask you, and now that we're kind of low on time, you might need to give it some thought and get back to me. I had wondered whether the Texas Center could design a curriculum that could be a, a training piece for potential judicial candidates. We've discussed various qualifications that would be helpful and discussed whether being board certified would be inappropriate. But it seems to me that some of the qualifications that a judge needs, as you discover on the job, have to do with temperament, which may or may not be taught, and implicit bias, as I think can be taught. And so we may not have time to talk about that today, but whether we recommend some kind of a, a... kind of a commission to consider candidates, whether the governor might, who will probably, even if we don't change anything, will still have the opportunity to appoint candidates, whether there could be a curriculum that a potential judge or judicial candidate could complete before running. So we may not have time to talk about that much.
But Judge Jamison, I'd like to point out that we require many of our, we already require many of our judges to have, such as family violence and ethicals and so far, and our attorneys as well. We also require many of our attorneys who want to practice in mediation to have certain certification in mediation. At lioms before they're appointed, need to have certain certifications. So I'm not sure that it is without the realm of reasoning that we can require, you know, you have to have undergone so much training before you can even, you know, just like five years, if it's five years or ten years, whatever, board certification, that you have that as well as before you can submit your name for application that there may be undergone. That can definitely be done by the Texas Center for the Judiciary in teaching judicial temperament, which is one of the things we teach at the center, as long as implicit bias. We teach those to our judges every day, because I think sometimes judicial temperament and judicial implicit bias, we need to be reminded of it and be continuously on top of new law and new mental health issues and drug issues. I mean, it's constantly, we live in this revolving world. So I think that definitely that is not something that is without the realm of reasoning. We just need funding to go with it. Am I going to stick my head to something?
Talk to the Court of Criminal Appeals, right?
Yeah. Yes, please talk to the Court of Criminal Appeals.
Any other questions by members of the commission?
Yes, Chairman, I've got another question, if I may. Justice Benavides, it's, thank you for being, and it's nice to see you again. I wondered if I could ask you the same or similar question to what I asked Chief Justice Contreras, and that is, if there's a change in the system, either do we go to appointed or retention or some change, is there any way to transition the current incumbent judges and thereby honor the will of the people that voted and as we all know, and increase diversity in some of our courts?
I think that you have to, whether it is for diversity purposes, only because constitutionally, all of those have been duly elected for the position. And I think there would be a constitutional and due process problem if you tried to take those rights away from them, that we've already been elected to do so. You know, we've dealt in those issues on the appellate level, Mr. Babcock, when we've had to realign the courts and move courts around and do it. Now, we haven't done that, I think, since the 1960s, but that's also, that's come across many circumstances when we, when counties lose judges because populations decrease, we lose sometimes judicials, and the same thing for appellate. But I think that it becomes more difficult then as time pushes forward, because depending on what system, and I'm not for, I just haven't seen any system that really takes the politics out of it. But for the sake of argument and hypothetically, if we are, how do we ensure that the diversity remains? There was a, may or may not know, there was a lawsuit filed in federal court in Corpus Christi attacking the voting rights of our Texas Supreme Court, because as we know, our Texas Supreme Court is only from the three major cities, the gateway, especially now from the big cities, and so we're, it's not a true representation of the whole system. And it was attacked on that basis, and that was not ruled in that favor, because they said it did not violate. And that was out of Judge Nava Gonzalez, who almost, I testified in that case. And so the problem is now not only the transition, Mr. Babcock, but how do you proceed to ensure that diversity when we know that selection problem do not favor? And why is that? Well, when you start talking about selections and qualifications, you start talking about, where did you go to school? The U.S. Supreme Court is all Harvard and Yale. Are you telling me that there are no other qualified people that can sit on the U.S. Supreme Court other than those who attend Harvard and Yale, you know, and Ivy League schools? There are reasons why those who are socially, economically not able to attend those type of schools, the opportunities aren't presented, it's a financial opportunity, including myself. So how do you proceed forward to ensure that you have diversity, not only at the beginning, but five years and ten years and thirty years down, as our state becomes more diverse?
Thank you very much. I take exception to the Harvard-Yale members of the Supreme Court having gone to Brown. No Brown graduates.
I know. I think that a U of H alumni should go, be on the U.S. Supreme Court, but that's just my idea. But of course, that was, that was one of the reasons I was given for not being on the Fifth Circuit. I didn't go to an Ivy League school, so.
Thank you very much, Justice Benavides. Very thoughtful and helpful comments, and thank you for taking your time to appear.
Thank you, Chairman.
And Chair, next we have Lynette Jobert.
All right, Ms. Jobert, you're on.
Hello, yes.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, I will, I will raise my voice. Can you hear me now?
A little bit better, but we still can't hear you very well.
Okay, I, is this better? I'm closer.
Megan, can we do anything to adjust the sound?
Um, I.
Just, if you can, we can't turn it up, but if you can just speak a little bit louder, we can hear you.
I can, I can certainly speak a little louder.
Okay, thank you.
I can do that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, thank you.
My name is Lynette Smith-Jobert, and I am a family lawyer. I was licensed to practice in seventy-nine, and I practiced for four years in Houston, and then we moved down here to Corpus Christi, which is, which is own. And I've been here ever since. As a family lawyer, I am primarily in the district courts, and I will say that we have a qualified judiciary. I don't, we have some that are more qualified than others, however, and we've all lived through four-year wonders. And we know when we get a four-year wonder, we know that they're not particularly qualified, and that after that time, they'll probably be out. So we all kind of tippy-toe around that judge, and basically, unless we know we're going to be favored in that court, we try to mediate our cases and not deal with that judge. We only have one of those right now, and I'm really glad for that. But it's a, it's a situation of, I believe, at this, I'm going to be a real nonstarter here, because I believe that we really need to go to something closer to the Missouri system. I still like the election of judges, but I think you have to look at it from a standpoint of elections in small towns and elections in big towns, because in small towns, we know each other a whole lot better. But then you get into big towns, and we really don't. And I had wonderful judges in Houston, I don't have any complaint about it at all. But, well, we had some that we knew were, you know, not as well qualified. But those of us in the, in the, on the trial end of it, we know which judges are biased. We know which judges are going to vote, for instance, with a certain voting group. You know, if I have a doctor on the other side of my case, I know pretty well which court is going to, is going to like that doctor and which one is, is not. And the money is really telling, and that's the issue. If you have a judge that's sitting there thinking about what group is going to give me a lot of money for my next election, then that, that judge is not thinking completely about the merits of the case. And I have a real problem with that, because I really believe that judges should be fair and unbiased, and most judges are, but some judges are not. And I would really like to have a situation where we would have something closer to the Missouri system, where we would have judges that would stand for election and then would have to come up for approval at some point. I know that citizens believe that they can pick the right people, but unfortunately, citizens very often are not particularly well informed. And we can have, I mean, I lived through the Don Yarbrough situation, through the Stephen Smith situation, where I know that people can be elected based on a name recognition as opposed to their qualifications. And I love being a trial lawyer, I'm missing the courtroom, something horrible now, but I really would like to have something other than partisan voting, and I would like to have more qualified people that stand for election as opposed to just anybody that wants to pay their, their money and probably get lucky.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jobert. Questions by members of the commission? If not, thank you very much for taking your time to appear before us and share your thoughts. We do, we really appreciate it, Ms. Jobert.
Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you.
And Chair, up next we have Kyle Holsher.
Thank you all for having me here. My name is Kyle Holsher. I have previously been the president of the Corpus Bar Association Criminal Law Section. I am currently the vice president of the Coastal Bend Criminal Defense Lawyers, and I've had about ten years' experience being an attorney here in the Coastal Bend area. And the one thing that I've noticed in that time, which is not that much in the grand scheme of things, is that regardless of party affiliation, judges do not make better decisions whether they are labeled with an R or a D next to their name. We need to move on to nonpartisan judicial elections. Is, the problem with having partisan judicial elections is that good judges are often wiped off the bench because of national politics. A slight change in national politics makes, you know, good judges who have the experience, the trust of the community, the trust of the legal community, lose their seat. Meanwhile, party loyalists, maybe, you know, even bad judges, will stay on the bench because they're part of the correct party. Whoever is winning current national elections stays on a local judiciary bench, and that's just not how it should be decided. We should be deciding our judges based on who the community trusts and who the local legal community trusts. More importantly, at this time in our national politics, when we have so much polarization, you're seeing judicial decisions being questioned based solely on their party affiliation, and that is absolutely not how judges should be thinking of any decision that they're making. We certainly have a good set of judges generally. No matter where I go, I think that generally the current system is working, but there is no reason that a judge should lose his position because one party or the other gets a little extra percentage point boost at the national level. The next item that I'm going to talk about, and that's pretty much all I want to say, is that the, I think that the Supreme Court of Texas and the Court of Criminal Appeals, we probably need to break that up into districts around the state. We have a, currently a one-party state essentially, if it's a statewide election. And right now, one party might be very happy with that system, but a shift of about ten percent of voting habits can make that same party extremely unhappy, because a slight shift the other direction means one hundred percent of the representation on the Supreme Court and the Court of Criminal Appeals shifts. And that's just not right, no matter who the party is. You break it down into districts, perhaps you have more diversity of opinion, and you have local people actually having their voice heard at that higher level. And so I think those are the two main things that I want, and many defense attorneys and many local judges, and frankly, a lot of different voters that I speak to about this issue, are all in favor of that. It's just, it's not a, it's not a very cool or hip topic or popular to talk about because no one thinks about it. So that's what I would ask this commission to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Holsher, and I particularly want to thank you for not appearing before us while driving your car.
Absolutely. Everyone's happy whenever I am not talking about marijuana legalization.
Any, any questions by members of the commission? If not, thank you so much, Mr. Holsher. We appreciate you appearing before us.
Y'all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chair, up next we have Charlie Webb.
All right. Chairman? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
You're on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other members of the commission, for this opportunity to address you and also to put on a tie for the first time in several weeks. I prepared some remarks this morning when I got to the office, and I am still going to the office, but now they appear to be either redundant or largely irrelevant, so it'll be a brief hodgepodge, but I promise to be quick. I do think what we're doing here, what you're doing respectfully is, is necessary, it's relevant, it ought to be done, and we hope that you will publish your conclusions and recommendations in a format that gets to all the voting public of the state of Texas. I think at the end of this process, you will reaffirm the system that we have now, because it works. I've been practicing, I said my name was Charlie Webb, I have a law firm here in Corpus Christi, I've known Mr. Hunter for, way before he considered running for office on, under a different party affiliation, I might add, but we've been friends for a long time, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to work on this important matter. So I have a law firm of five people here. I've known David Bright, Joseph Berrientos, and Ben Donald for many years together. We've all practiced probably, I practiced over forty-four years, Mr. Donald probably sixty years, probably have two hundred years of experience or close to it. And you won't hear us say anything except that we have good judges in South Texas. We have good, hard-working judges in South Texas. And for that reason, if no other reason, we ought to leave this system alone. It's been my experience, and I've worked closely with judges on both sides, Republican and Democrat, in the election process, it's been my experience that once someone who really wants to be a judge, and that's what it takes, by the way, is elected, that he or she is committed to protecting the integrity of the system, no matter which party that judge was affiliated with. And we, our judges all work hard, once they take the bench, with very few exceptions. But I don't know any conscientious or experienced lawyer that would ever presume a certain ruling from a judge because he or she had been elected from the Democrat platform or the Republican platform. That would be a foolish rookie mistake. And in fact, I've not heard any evidence yet that something is going on that's nefarious in that, in that regard. In other words, we can expect a certain result based on party affiliation. I think that is almost extinguished once they put the robes on. That's been my opinion, that's been my personal experience in my entire career. I think politics is the last thing on the mind of a judge when he or she are in the throes of deliberating on a difficult family law matter, or child custody matter, or juvenile placement matter, and we are loaded with those in our courts in South Texas, or a contract dispute, or a criminal case. Judges don't have time to be thinking about who, who elected them and who's going to give to their campaign next time around. In the rare instance when we have a judge, and we've had some in these years of my experience, that falls out of public favor, we've seen that judge lose on a succeeding election cycle, even when his party dominates, even when his party or her party wins up and down the ballot. Importantly, and this is my final comment, and I don't know if this has been addressed, but probably Justice Contreras addressed it, importantly, we have folks that have gone on to be very successful judges, elected over and over, some elected to the appellate courts in Texas, some, and I won't mention names, have been appointed as federal district judges and beyond. have been appointed as federal district judges and beyond, that probably wouldn't have made the list under any kind of an appointment or merit or who-do-you-know system. The only reason he or she had that opportunity, and I've worked on the ground floor with some that knew 10 people in this town, had the support of three lawyers to start with, literally, in their first campaign. We would not have, maybe 10 is an exaggeration, but the three lawyers, I can remember the, the race. They would not have had an opportunity to, to prove themselves as excellent jurists if it wasn't for the, the system that we have, where you bring candidates to the public at large. And so I would encourage you to continue this very informative, important work that you're doing. And, but in closing, I urge you to find that there's really no compelling reason to change the system that we have for electing our judges. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Uh, any questions by members of the commission? If not, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you taking your time to appear before us.
Yes, sir.
And Chair, up next, we have Jose Manalas.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Manalas.
My name is Jose Manuel Manalas. I'm a senior district judge here in Texas. Uh, I became a lawyer in 1975, graduated from University of Houston, another U of H lawyer. Uh, moved to Corpus Christi and have remained in Corpus Christi throughout my professional career. In 1986, I was elected as a district judge for the 150th District Court, a three-county district court. And I remember back in 1986, when I was elected, that uh, John Hill, I believe, then at the time was the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, uh, was pushing for a Missouri plan for the election of judges in Texas. And he had a session here in Corpus Christi, and he was pushing it, and, and I had just gotten elected, uh, and I had serious concerns about that proposal. I told him that the only way that I would support a blue ribbon type commission to select the judges for our courts was to be if I were be, if I were to be on that blue ribbon commission, or someone like me. There was no guarantee that he talked about that someone like me would be on that commission. And uh, as we know through history, that didn't happen. And here we are again, some, almost 40 years later, still working at it. Well, I got elected in 1986 and served through 2010. And what I have seen, uh, I want to talk about right now, changes that I would like to see from this commission are recommendations to require that to become a district court judge, that person must have been a lawyer for at least 10 years. And that person must have jury trial experience. That person has to know what it is to be in the pit of the courtroom, trying a case, presenting argument, making objections, knowing what the law is. And having that knowledge, that person can become a good judge. I don't know whether somebody saw it sometime either earlier this year or last year, uh, when Senator Kennedy from Louisiana, as a member of the Judiciary Committee, was considering nominees to the federal bench by our current president, and he had before him four or five nominees. And he asked a question to all of them. Tell me, gentlemen, what is a motion limit and what's the purpose for a motion limit? Not a single one, not a single one of them knew what a motion limit is and what its purpose was. And the hearing was uh abruptly ended, and all those nominees' names were withdrawn. So that told me that not being a trial lawyer uh would have been a detriment to the courts that they were being to uh, that they were uh, being recommended for appointment. And that's why I'm saying that uh, to be a judge, you must have a number of years as a lawyer, and you must have jury trial experience. Now, should we require board certification? I don't think so, because I've seen some board certified lawyers who just don't cut We've talked about uh how to finance judicial elections. You are, some of you ask questions how to do it. Well, let me suggest this. Those most interested in having good judges are the lawyers. Of course, the public as a whole is interested in it, but the ones most interested, those who have a big stake in the outcome of a case are the lawyers. So we should tax the lawyers to pay for a public financing system of judges, and also to encourage contributions from others who wish, who would want to have good, a good judiciary in our state. I've seen billboards, and I'm sure you have too, of lawyers who say that uh we just want a case for our client that we settled for $15 million or $35 million or whatever the case may be. And certainly those lawyers made a good deal of money for themselves. Well, um, taxing lawyers on a percentage type of a basis would certainly fund a judicial financing commission um very nicely. I would recommend that as, as a way to finance the public financing of judicial elections. For the most part, I support the election of judges. And let me get personal now. Uh, I served for 24 years as a district judge. In 2010, I was opposed by a Republican, and I had no problems with that. The problem, though, was that uh, my opponent had minimal trial experience. And uh, as it turned out, she won the election, I was out, and during her service, she received so many complaints about her conduct and her behavior in the courtroom and out of the courtroom, that after she lost her reelection bid at the primary four years later, after she left office, the Commission of Judicial Conduct, because of the number of complaints that had been filed against her, proceeded to discipline her, and at the last minute, an agreement was reached where she agreed never to serve as a district judge or any judge uh in any court of this state. That tells us that someone who is not qualified to serve should be elected as a judge. So I, I would strongly urge that uh, those who seek to run for a judicial post for a court of record, I'm not talking about JPs, that that person have a number of years of uh experience as a lawyer and have jury trial experience, and be, file some sort of a certificate that uh he or she has had some sort of implicit bias training. When I took office in 1987, within the Fifth Administrative Judicial Region, which covers 11 counties from Corpus Christi to Cameron County, uh, there were less than 10 Hispanic judges on the bench. Today, there are less than 10 white judges on the bench. The elections have given opportunity to Hispanic lawyers to be elected as judges of the courts in the region. And that is, that has happened throughout the state. Uh, I urge the commission to make those changes or to recommend to the legislature for minimum number of lawyers, not minimum number of years that a lawyer must have before that person runs for office, and to have jury trial experience and meet other requirements necessary to be a good judge. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and if you have any questions, I'll be, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Judge Manalas. Uh, any questions by members of the commission?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I have.
Senators?
Uh, good seeing you, Judge Manalas, or at least hearing you. I know Judge Manalas, I guess we even studied together for State Bar many, many times.
You did, Senator. I figured out the county judge, oh, the judge, Manalas.
Manalas.
Yes.
Uh, pardon, Judge Manalas. Uh, and uh, we actually studied together for State Bar way back in Houston many, many years ago. But I, I would like to make, I guess point out, Judge, uh, Manalas, that uh, a tax on the lawyers, I mean, I like to mean that they would pass on the cost to the client, uh, just like they do with filing fees. Uh, so I'm not sure that would be the answer to trying to fund judiciary uh campaigns. Do you agree with that?
I don't know. I, I really don't know. Uh, we all have to pay for our system of government one way or the other, Senator, and uh, I think that would be one way of doing it.
Well, and I like your suggestion on higher qualifications, we've been discussing that, uh, this initial continues to come up again and again. Uh, but again, thank you for your testimony, uh, Judge Manalas.
Thank you, Senator.
Any, any other questions by members of the commission? If not, Judge, thank you so much for taking your time to appear before us and share your thoughts with us. Thank you so much.
And Chairman, up next, Bradford Condit.
All right, Mr. Condit.
Yes, can you help me?
You can.
Yes, my name is Brad Condit. I've been a lawyer in Corpus Christi, trial lawyer for 37 years. I've handled in excess of 3,000 lawsuits and have written in over excess of 100 appeals. I've seen the good and the bad. My uh observation is I think nonpartisan elections have got to be the future. They are so essential in this time of such severe partisanship and acrimony that has got to take the Republican and Democrat label off of our judgeships. I wanted to make a comment about diversity. And in fact, the 13th Circuit Appeals is 20 counties large. In two counties alone, that being Hildago and Cameron County, there are more Democratic voters than all 18 other counties combined. I did that study some years ago, and that's what I discovered. And so you have this 20-county jurisdiction, and two counties are dictating to all other counties, and we're talking about as far north as uh, as Victoria. What the, what does a voter in Brownsville have to do with electing a justice in Victoria? Or rather for Victoria? There's none. The standard of abuse of discretion is such a powerful uh legal concept that uh cases are lost and won based on abuse of discretion. And um, so that much power, which of course, the trial court is the most powerful uh office in the state of Texas. The election, I believe, uh, should stay in the trial court because the people who would know most about that judge would be the one, of course, electing. And the appellate court, no. I have every, every six years, actually every four years, I get uh lots and lots of requests from my friends and family, uh, who to elect, or who to vote for in the appellate level, even in the trial court level, because they have no idea. And these are highly educated, politically astute people, and they pay attention to politics. They have absolutely no clue uh of any of the appellate judges' qualifications and most of the trial judges' qualifications. I also am a strong um advocate, recently, 68% of the United States elector uh citizens believe that there should be term limits for Congress. Well, term limits should also be imposed on the other elected officials, and those being judges, because the concentration of power is just that, humans are humans, and you cannot vote somebody out without knowing the details of their decisions. And unless you read every Thursday or every Friday, the appellate decision is coming down, you will never know. And so um, there would be a two-term limit. And lastly, uh, is other states that have what's called a trial court shuffle. When a plaintiff files a lawsuit, it's randomly assigned to a, a trial judge. But the defendant, however, gets to pick which lawyer goes to that judge. And that is a type of selection that ought to be evened out, which means that the plaintiff should have a right to shuffle one time. And they do it in other jurisdictions, in other uh states. And that's my comments and observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condit. Uh, actually, there's some pretty interesting ideas that you've suggested here, and I thank you for those uh very innovative comments. Any questions by members of the commission? If not, thank you so much, Mr. Condit, for taking your time to appear before us and sharing your views. Thank you.
Thank you for your time very much.
Chairman, that's, um, we had more people that were registered, but they don't appear to be on the meeting, and so that's all that we have.
Okay, I just want to be clear. Is there anyone else uh who has either signed up or who frankly has appeared that would like to testify before our public hearing here in Corpus Christi?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Badientos?
Yes, I'm sorry. If I'm not cutting off anybody else, I, I did want to mention one thing. I've noticed from, from listening to the previous commission hearings, there's been some discussion about the distinction between urban counties and suburban or rural counties. And one of the, the issues being the number of judicial races in the, in the big cities. Um, so let me start off by mentioning this. I, I think a citizen of Texas, whether they live in the middle of Houston, in the Fifth Ward, or in Snyder, or in some suburban area, should have an equal right to select their judges. And, and I want to raise this point as a possibility. In the large urban counties, has there been any thought given to electing judges, where you have, say, in Harris County, I think one of the members of the commission said you have between 45 and 50 or 55 judges on a ballot at one time, more in the gubernatorial cycle? Has there been any thought to electing judges from perhaps county commissioner precincts? That is, the judges would need to live in and be elected by members of a county commissioner precinct, but then once they are on the bench, they would serve uh and have jurisdiction over county-wide cases would be assigned as they would normally. And that, to me, it seems, and again, this is literally something that just came to my mind as I was listening to all of you. That might cut down on the expense required to run a campaign. It might allow those candidates to actually get out and knock on doors and get to know those potential voters. Um, it would be less, it would reduce the number of candidates on the ballot for some of those judges, uh, race, races, therefore addressing the issue that, well, you have voter ignorance, which I, I must confess to you, sounds like a rather ignorant, arrogant concept. But if the issue is we've got too many names on the ballot, what if they ran from county commissioner districts, precincts in those large counties, and they were required to live in them? But when they serve on the bench, they would receive cases in the order that they are assigned by the district court and the random selection basis that we normally have. That, it seems to me, would reduce the number of actual positions on the ballot that a, that a voter is faced with deciding upon. It would reduce the amount of money required to run a campaign. And by, I'll disclose, my wife's a judge, has been a judge for a number of years. I know what that involves. I know what uh difficulties campaigning entails. But at the same time, would preserve the right of voters in those counties to elect the judges, because I think they're going to tell you, they want, they ought to have the right to elect their judges just the same as somebody who lives in a rural county. Um, and again, that, there may be all kinds of problems with that, but it just occurred to me that that um, that's at least a possibility that occurred to me as I was sitting here listening to all the various viewpoints.
Well, that, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Badientos. That's an interesting concept. I, I, I don't know that it's ever been tried in Harris County for sure, but um, I, I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and that's something we'll consider, and uh.
It would also, Mr.
For your parents.
Mr. Chairman, it would also ensure some geographic distribution of members of the, of the judiciary in those large urban counties. That is, uh, they would actually come from the areas uh that, from which they're elected by voters. that, uh, from what's their elected by voters. So anyway, thank you all again and we appreciate it. I, I really take my hats off to all of you, uh, for donating your time. Um, and again, if we can be of any help or service down in Corpus, please let us know. Thank you, Representative Hunter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beriantos. Uh, uh, that concludes, uh, our public hearing. Uh, and I want to thank Representative Hunter for helping us, uh, get this organized. This was kind of our, our guinea pig, if you will, the first public hearing we had, and I think we've learned a little bit from it. Uh, and then, uh, I'll be talking to Megan and we'll be trying to obtain dates for you for our next public hearing. Uh, Representative Hunter, I think you had a question.
Yeah. For, for the, uh, members of the commission and Chairman, thanks. Uh, I want you to see, we really have a great, active community and they really do care. And the good thing is almost everybody on here knows each other that has testified and talked. We all really work together. It's a working together community. And Senator Henaosa and I have, uh, worked together, so you all know, since 1989. Neither hairstyle has changed. We've, we've been that long together. But let me make sure you know the area that we're dealing with. Uh, city of Corpus Christi is represented by Senator Henaosa, myself and Representative Herrero, who was participating in this proceeding. Nuasis County is represented by Senator Henaosa, myself, Representative Herrero, and Senator Colcorse in the Port Aransas part of the Padre Island area. So I wanted the commission to know who, uh, your legislators are down here. And Senator Henaosa, myself and Representative Herrero are practicing lawyers. And we've practiced in this area for quite a while. And so I wanted to let you know geographically who represented the zone. But we've had, we have a very good connection with South Texas from the valley to the coastal bend. And you had participants today that impact both. And I want to thank everybody that attended, Chairman, because we just got hit by almost a category two hurricane. And I appreciate all these people taking their time to participate. But other than that, we're, we're glad and we hope you, you, uh, come back again.
Thank you very much, Representative Hunter. I echo your comments, uh, about, uh, the people who appeared before us really making a sacrifice, given the, the times that, uh, that they have, uh, that we're now facing and they in particular faced as a result of the hurricane. So I, I really echo your comments. That really concludes our public hearing and, uh, I just want to say to all the members of the commission in this difficult time in which we live, everyone, please stay safe. And I noticed that Representative Hunter has a black mask, which is color coordinated with his, the rest of his outfit. So thank you all very much for appearing.